Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Summit Board of Education meeting for September 8th. I ask everybody, it's time to please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, I wish to announce that the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. Notices announcing the date, time, and place for this meeting were sent to all concerned individuals, associations, and sent to Union County local source in accordance with Chapter 231 of Public Law 1975. For the roll call, Ms. Stanton?
Here.
Dr. Porek is absent. Ms. Miller is absent. Ms. Justice?
Here.
Ms. Cullen?
Here.
Vice President Cho?
Here.
President Cullen, here, you have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Jess. A few things just to kick off. We have several presentations to recognize tenured staff, to recognize and honor three members of the district who have reached 25 years of service, and we're going to review our district goals. After that, just a little bit of layout of this meeting and the format. After that, we will present and vote on new hires. So all of that will happen back to back to back. I would ask that for those in attendance at this point in the meeting, if you could remain through that vote, and then there will be a brief recess right after that vote, so that folks who wish to leave can leave, and then we'll continue with the business of the board after that, after that brief break. And the comments, president's comments, et cetera, are noted in the agenda as coming before that vote. We will do all of that after the vote. So that's the format. So we will kick off with the presentations. Oh, and I would ask the board members, if you could, I think there are enough seats, because we're going to line up folks in front of the dais. So we could do that.
Good evening. I am honored to recognize the district's newly tenured staff for demonstrating the expertise, commitment, and professionalism necessary to be successful staff members of Summit Public Schools and completing the requirements for their tenure in their position with the Summit Public Schools. When I call your name, please come up to receive your certificate of tenure and remain in front of the dais to get a group photo after everyone is called. Ryan Amiano. Delene Babbis. Caroline Bandelli. Angelique Bender. Damian Patantes. John Seferny. Bill Collins. Peter Connolly. Anne Dooley. Laura Drews. Alice Ingles. Nicole Finnegan. Michelle King. Kelly Cliffe. Yuri Lopez. Francesca Marioli. Marta Michelle. Iris Munias. Gary Paschal. Mercedes Piola. Gina Terabatia. Naomi Tucker. Smita Visma. Bonnie Weinstein.
Congratulations to all of our newly tenured staff. Congratulations. It is my pleasure to announce the presentation of the 25 Year of Service Award. We have three employees this year who have reached that milestone, two of which could not make it tonight. So we have Vincent Anzillo from the Maintenance Department and Jennifer Maturco, teacher from the middle school for 25 years of service. But we do have one very special 25 Year of Service Award winner here with us today. So I would ask that Deborah Yendrick and Matt Carl come up to the microphone.
Scott has to stop tweeting me. It's really, we wear the same outfits practically. So with that, hi, everybody. However, this is a great kickoff to a great year. All right. In order to buy coffee, one, two, bring hot coffee to school. Three, start doing a million things. Four, forget you brought the coffee. And five, drink it cold. Some of Debbie's passions are evident on a daily basis. Let's talk about coffee. Hot, cold, or otherwise, it's unquestionable that Debbie loves a cup of coffee. In fact, one time, I can recall even asking me, is anyone still drinking this? As she inquired about a primarily full box of Joe from Dunkin' that was still in the staff room at day's end. Author Dave Burgess highlights three passions in his book Teach Like a Pirate: personal, professional, and content passion. Coffee is most certainly one of Debbie's personal passions. Then there's Debbie's professional passion, or the why we got into teaching in the first place aspect of our professional lives. Debbie's professional passion is so evident in the manner which she's not only a teacher, but she's an ongoing learner as well. Debbie is a consumer of new strategies, research, ideas, and applications that are so often transferred into her daily instruction. She loves the science and art of teaching. Debbie is a risk taker, which is done ultimately to benefit her students and help them see success and achievement as lifelong learners. Hey, want some ideas about, or want to learn about the foundations or new initiatives in instruction? Just talk to Debbie, or even visit her Twitter. Shout out to @DwightTeach11. Then there's Debbie's content passion. In other words, as Burgess reminds us, of all the topics and standards you teach as part of your curriculum, these are the ones that you most enjoy. I suspect that the science and application of literacy instruction is one that sits on Debbie's Mount Rushmore of teaching. Debbie's professional content and, yes, personal passions have been those that have made such a difference in the lives of her students as well as our Lincoln Hubbard community as a whole. She started out as an inclusion aide and then taught at the first through third grade levels. And now, as a learning workshop teacher, Debbie's investment in the classroom is undeniable. Her investment in our entire Lincoln Hubbard community as a whole has shined through in so many years. Whether it was creating and teaching a series of family literacy nights for LH parents as well as parents across the district, offering a morning book club for colleagues, or delivering professional development to help us grow our practice, Debbie has been at the ready. These are just some of the reasons as to why Debbie was the very first recipient of the Union County Teacher of the Year Award representing Lincoln Hubbard School when this recognition was originally introduced in Summit. By the way, everybody, if you're looking for Debbie tomorrow morning at 7:45 a.m., she'll be supporting our first-year teachers at a coffee, of course, and conversation in her role as our skip team representative. Skip is our school improvement panel. Offering ideas and supporting these new teachers as they prepare for back-to-school night. There's one other personal passion of Debbie's that I need to celebrate, and that is her family. Her brother and her twin sister are both educators. And mom, and I found out tonight, dad, both worked in the new province school district. And Scott, he told me a few about you, we'll get to that. Debbie, no. Debbie also loves being an aunt and all of the adventures in that role that bring her so much joy. So, in closing, thank you, Debbie, for 25 years of your personal, professional, and content passions that have made such a positive difference at Lincoln Hubbard School and the Summit Public Schools as a whole. I wish you a wonderful 2022, 23, school year and beyond. And Debbie, the next Joe is on me.
Congratulations again, Debbie. It's quite a feat to commit your whole career to one district and service the community of children for Summit Public Schools. Congratulations. Okay, I am very excited to present tonight our 22, 23 board goals. But before I do, I want to give a brief overview of the process that we follow to develop the goals on an annual basis. Our goals are really more or less a large picture of a three-year, multi-year vision for the school district. And what we strive to do every year annually is to develop outcomes that will serve us to those goals. So we are basically, or two or three are some of our goals that we're going to approve tonight at the board level. And I want to share them with you. But before we do that, the process really begins with the administrators and a lot of collaborative discussion, basically evaluating where we were last year, what we've accomplished, and basically decide next steps for the outcomes within our goals. This is a very similar process that the board used to follow when we did focus areas. But basically what we're talking about now, focus areas, excuse me, are embedded within our goals, so we no longer need them. But there is one aspect of the focus area and process that we want to keep, and that's collecting input from the community. And what we plan to do, certainly, we welcome anybody to provide input here at our board meetings, but less formally, we are going to post town hall style meetings this year, where we'll invite the public out and share their thoughts about our goal and the direction of the district. Our first one will be in October, and I will send out a notice well in advance of that first town hall meeting. So with that, our board goals. Goal one, Summit Public Schools will continue to foster an inclusive school community that values diversity, equity, and social-emotional growth within its climate, operations, curricula, and programs. This goal is brand-new language, and for those of you that are familiar with our goals from last year, we had a social-emotional learning goal, and we also had a diversity, equity, inclusivity, and belonging goal. And we really felt strongly this year that we have built enough of a foundation around those two individual goals that we can put them together and create one goal and continue the work that we're doing within the district. So much of what we do in these two areas overlap with our programs, our initiatives, and the activities that we offer for our students and our staff. So for our outcome this year, certainly in a collaborative effort, the district will continue to deliver professional development, social-emotional learning programming that supports a sense of belonging throughout the school community. In addition, the district will analyze data to develop a multi-year plan to improve equitable educational experiences for all students and staff. And we're well underway already this year with some of the activities. We brought in Nurtured Heart and started training some of our elementary schools with the Nurtured Heart program, which is going to improve the climate and environment in our schools. We're going to continue with some implicit bias training for our teachers and our leaders. And we're going to begin to embark on some culturally responsive teaching practices with our administrative team this year. And certainly under this goal, some of the things that we continue to do on a yearly basis is provide our workshops, parent series workshops to the community, and update our Thrive and Advisory curriculum for our students. Goal number two, Summit Public Schools will continue to improve its ability to utilize data to inform instructional programming and implement strategies that target areas of growth for all students. And our outcome this year is certainly going to be to expand our data analysis protocols to include consistent district-wide data analysis circles, grade level and department meetings, and progress monitoring to establish a foundation to build a multi-tiered system of support for all learners. Certainly, data is back in the forefront now that we have NJSLA scores that we need to analyze. We need to develop targeted instruction for all of our students at the levels that they are. And we're also using iReady as a platform, assessment platform, within our classrooms to help teachers begin to take a look at that data and improve student achievement with their teaching and learning. Goal number three, this is no stranger to anyone. We've been talking so much about STEAM. The Summit Public Schools will continue to expand learning experiences for all students in the areas of science, technology, engineering arts, and mathematics to cultivate interest, encourage innovative thought processes, and prepare for the future opportunities in a dynamic global landscape. And we are well on our way with this goal and continuing it for this year. And our actual desired outcome, considering we're in different places with our elementary and secondary level programs and initiatives, so we have two different outcomes for this year. Our elementary outcome, as you may know, we are up and running this year. We're so excited. We have brand-new innovation labs in all of our elementary schools. We have brand-new dedicated STEAM teachers for those labs to support the curriculum. And every student in grade one through five is going to go through that lab this year and have brand-new learning opportunities in the area of STEAM. So we are really charged this year to continue to evaluate that program, make adjustments to curriculum and instruction as we go so that we can move forward with it for many years to come. And our secondary outcome largely is dependent on our bond issuance, because we have very big plans to expand spaces and create innovative spaces in our middle and our high schools, similar to what we have at the elementary school. But the work that we need to do this year at our secondary level is to continue with our subcommittee and develop our specific courses, evaluate our staffing needs, write course proposals, write curriculum in preparation for, hopefully, the bond issuance that can be approved. And in the 23, 24 school year, we will have the space to start implementing the secondary STEAM initiatives more fully. We have introduced some new coursework last year in this work as well that supports this initiative, but there's largely a lot more planning and preparation to do for the years to come. So the board will be voting on these goals this evening, like we do. And I do invite anyone to come out to our town halls this year when I give you notice for October's meeting and share your thoughts and input and feedback about the direction and vision for the school district. Thank you very much. All right. Good evening. Let's get this going. We're going to move on to the report of new hires. As you know, we like to celebrate our new hires into the school community, so we ask them to come for their board approval session. And I ask them to stand when I say your name, and we'll say a few things about our administrators first, and then we'll announce the teachers and the rest of the staff that are here with us and their assignments in the district. And we are going to begin with Mr. John Seferny. Where are you? John will be Walton C. Johnson Summit Middle School Principal Leader very soon. Upon evaluating feedback from both the parent and staff focus groups, it was, and over 80 survey responses, by the way, it was evident that our best candidate for this position was currently working in our school district. I have the utmost confidence in John and anticipate great success with him as our leader of Summit Middle School. John is a passionate about advancing curriculum, fostering a positive, inclusive, and safe environment, and developing staff members through meaningful PD. John has established himself as a student-centered leader who understands the middle-level child. He is well-respected within the community, and he is a perfect match with the profile created by our stakeholders for our next middle school leader. Congratulations, John. This is Natalie Ferrius. Natalie? All the way in the back. Natalie was approved in July, but there's not a lot of people at our board meetings in July, so we brought her back to be recognized again. So I'm just going to read a little piece about you, and we're happy to have you. Ms. Ferrius' previous experience includes eight years as an assistant principal in the East Windsor Regional School District. Prior to her administrative experience, she was an elementary school teacher for New Republic Schools for six years. Natalie exudes wonderful qualities that will truly complement and benefit the Jefferson School community. Congratulations. If I may announce your name, please stand. Christina Patel. Christina. Class teacher at Summit High School. Natalie Carpenter, special education teacher, Summit High School. Nirvana Bojovic. Music teacher. Eliza Romalosa. Monica Galasso. Stephanie Alia. Christina DeGilera. Elementary teacher at Bryan Elementary School. And Geneva Lacante. Those are our new hires in attendance today, Mr. Paul.
All right, thank you Superintendent Huff. Welcome to all of the new hires and to our staff member who's transitioning into a bigger role. We wish you all the best in the coming year and in future years. So welcome, and thank you for choosing Summit as a place to benefit our students. Do I have a motion to approve these new hires?
I think you missed one. Chelsea Semedo. Can I agree?
Did I miss one? I'm sorry, Chelsea. Check my list. It's down, it's not coming. Okay. Chelsea Semedo.
Chelsea.
Is Esther Andugala here? Okay. I had a list of new teachers that I've ordered, and you didn't. I thought I was, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else we missed? Motion to approve the list of new hires.
Seven minutes.
Second.
All right. Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cullen?
Yes.
Vice President Cho?
Yes.
President Cullen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we will take a quick, three-minute break and continue the meeting thereafter. And we'll start with president's comments, and then go to you, Scott, and go from there. Okay, perfect. So I will jump in. First comment is to welcome all of our students back to school. And I was at Washington School on Tuesday morning, and it was absolutely inspiring to see the smiles on the faces of students as they came up the stairs into the building and met their teachers and their classmates. And I hope that, one thing I noticed was the goodbyes with the parents for the younger students. And I hope the parents cherish that, because I will tell you, as an experienced parent, letting go of those kids, that only lasts a couple of years. And then the goodbyes go away. They're just gone. So it was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. And with that, I would also like to thank the administration, the principals, the educators, the custodians, the district staff. There was a lot of work that went into preparation for day one and beyond throughout this summer with respect to facilities work and curriculum work and preparation, professional development, et cetera, et cetera. And so thank you to everyone who contributed for a successful day one, a successful week, and hopefully, a successful school year. One point on topics that we have already covered in this meeting, the district goals. That was, in fact, a collaborative effort to arrive at those goals with the district administration and the board. We held a meeting in August to review, discuss, tweak, refine, et cetera, each of those goals to make sure that not only were they consistent with the expectations of our community, but that they were actionable and that the district had a plan to move forward on each of them. And so those goals are not intended to be rhetoric. It's the responsibility of this board to ensure that progress is made in each of those goals. And so thank you Superintendent Huff and your team for the thoroughness with which you presented those goals and the process to arrive at the presentation today. And I would also like to make an introduction. And it's probably obvious... And it's probably obvious at this point that we have new members sitting up here at the table. And if you're like me, you're actually really happy to see these new members because they are, in fact, students in Summit High School. And this was mentioned in Policy Committee last year, that the state of New Jersey, to their credit, issued a mandatory policy beginning this school year where there would be school representatives attending student representatives attending our board meetings on a going-forward basis. And so that begins tonight. And the responsibilities of that student, those students, are to provide feedback to the board on matters that are of relevance to them as students in the high school and in the district, and to convey back to the student body the actions and work of the board to make sure that there is sufficient communication and understanding between the board and the student body. And so it's a fabulous step. I think the state has taken, and we fully embrace it. And so I would like to welcome our student representative, Lena Kifnitis. Lena is a sophomore at the high school and is involved in 100,000 things, including field hockey, which I think is what the uniform represents, if I have that right, okay? Softball, Student Council, Red Cross Club, Mock Trial, Girls' Club of Summit, and probably a few more things I don't have here. Lena's interest in this role stems from her involvement and enjoyment in Student Council at the high school and her goal to improve her leadership and communication skills. And this is a great step in that direction. And as an alternate to Lena, I would also introduce Grace Epstein, who is here this evening. And so these two will be responsible for fulfilling that role of student representative with our board. And so welcome and thank you for taking on the responsibility. And I think that's good to end on for me, so I will pass along to you, Superintendent Huff.
Thank you, President Cologne. I will open by welcoming everybody and tell everyone that we had a terrific start to the 2022-23 school year. We welcomed our staff on August 30th. They were greeted by our high school cheerleaders and our high school band members. So many thanks to all those students who participated in that event, as well as the coaches who took their time to practice and be there as well. It was really a welcoming sight to see. From there, they were greeted with a breakfast. Thank you, Pomtonian. Pomtonian commented that it was the largest staff that they ever created at Summit Breakfast for, close to 700 people. So no small feat to do that. Thank you, Pomtonian. Wonderful job. From there, a few words from me to the staff, and then they were treated to an outstanding presentation from John Kamegno, who is one of our board attorneys. John does speak nationally on a variety of educational topics, and he definitely hit the mark with our staff on that day. His presentation was funny, yet he successfully delivered the message that our community has stuck together and bonded together through the pandemic on behalf of our children, and we've created and accomplished tremendous things in our district. And that's certainly a sentiment that is shared by me and this Board of Education. So thank you, John Kamegno. Our staff really enjoyed it. Positive feedback all the way around. It's one of the best kickoffs we've had ever. So it was outstanding. And also thank you to our PTOs for decorating our schools with balloons and welcoming our kids back to school this school year. As I mentioned, the kickoff was excellent. I will comment that there was a lot of energy and enthusiasm. You can see it in the staff's eyes and their body language. It was great to see. I know we're carrying that momentum into the beginning of this school year, and we're excited about all that we have ahead of us. And speaking of enthusiasm, we have a tremendous buzz from our elementary schools with our new innovation labs and our new STEAM teachers. They're very excited. All of our labs were created and designed over the summer. So many thanks to our custodial and maintenance staff for making that timeline because they are up and running at the start of the school year, and they look fantastic. So we're very excited about that. On another note, we did revise our health standards this school year, this past summer, and they do align now with the requirements from the Department of Ed. The lessons and the resources that we used in the revised curriculum were developed by our own teachers and our nurses, and we follow the same approach as we have in the past with all other curriculum revisions. We understand that some in the community are a little curious about what the revisions are, when some of the new topics will be taught, and if parents or how will parents have the opportunity, the process for opting out of specific lessons. So parents will be notified by the school nurse in advance of those curriculum elements that they are able to opt out of and be given information about that process. And Dr. Joe Cordero, Director of Curriculum Instruction, will be sending out a letter soon explaining all the changes, as well as giving a link to the curriculum so all of the parents in the community can feel free to look through it on their own. And we want to make sure that we have full transparency when we come to this topic. And finally, we will be testing our emergency notification system within the next couple of weeks. Families will receive a call from school messenger to make sure that we have the right contact information. So I do encourage parents to log into Genesis. You can update your phone numbers at any time. If you don't get a call within the next couple of weeks, that's the reason your number that you have listed probably doesn't match the one you're currently using. So we'll be sending that out in the next couple of weeks, and that system is used for emergency closings and emergency information as well throughout the school year. And that concludes my report. Mr. Cologne?
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Secretary Jess, do you want to present any additions, revisions to the agenda now, or would you like to do it as we go throughout the meeting?
How about if I do it after the student representative's report?
I think for this Lena, correct me if I'm wrong, but for this meeting, you're passing on any comments, correct?
Oh, I was told I was commenting. Sorry.
You are welcome to comment.
Okay.
Okay. Please go.
Hi. As you've been told, I am the student representative, and this is my co-student representative. I'm Lena Kifnitis, and this is Grace Epstein, and we're here to report to you of all the student happenings that's going on in Summit High School. This upcoming weeks, sports have been starting, as you can see by the sweatiness on the side of the table. Football has been going on, and their games are coming up, as well as field hockey, which was today, and volleyball. The drama, the play has been coming up for all the thespians. So that is something rotten. And the auditions are coming up in November, which everyone is excited about. For clubs, the club interest meetings are coming up, which I think the club fair is coming up as well. And there's some new clubs joining the Summit High School. Light the Candle, which donates to cancer research, is joining, and it's a new club being started. And Student Council has been beginning meetings. From now, I'm going to pass this off to my co.
Coming this weekend, Summit High School will be holding annual Stokes training for the upcoming Stokes counselors. They'll be trained to create lots of enthusiasm and welcoming environment for the rising middle schoolers. Additionally, this Tuesday, September 6th, Summit Schools held its first day welcoming new and old students, welcoming back into the working environment. Students have been getting back into the rhythm while working together on getting to know-you activities and meeting new students and teachers along the way. Thank you so much for listening. We are so thankful to be Summit students representatives at this meeting. It is an honor for students to be represented at this board-level meeting and thankful for the opportunity to pave the way for more student representation in the future.
Thank you again for being here and for the update. Much appreciated. Okay. The next item, so would you like to cover agenda?
Yes.
Changes.
Yes, I will. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Some revisions and additions to the agenda this evening. Under Personnel this evening, Item B 10 and 11, the hourly rates are being changed to $206 per day. Item L, the hourly rate is being changed to $84.08. Item P, the rates are being changed in orders from 1 to 5 to 8276, 6124, 6662, 9808, and 6385. Items X, hourly rate being changed to 2730. Item Z, hourly rate being changed to 2798. Item double B, the hourly rate will be 2883. Item double C, 2730. Item double D, 2798. Item double F, 2798. Also like to note that due to the deadline for submission of agenda items, hourly rates will be adjusted for the October 13th board meeting and paid accordingly. And we have several additions under Personnel. Item B 19, approval of filing change of assignment. Ms. Nancy Hannah from Inclusion Aid at Washington Elementary School to Inclusion Aid at Summit High School. Item 20, John Resto from Inclusion Aid at Wilson Primary Center to Inclusion Aid at Lincoln Hubbard Elementary School. Item double H, approval to appoint John Seferny, Principal of Lawton C. Johnson Middle School, at a salary of $140,000 prorated effective October 24th, 2022 or sooner contingent upon the transition and pending release of Donna Gallo, Principal of Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School. And item double I, approval to appoint the following substitute teachers pending criminal history review. Tiffany Moreno, $125 per day. Thank you, Mr. Cologne.
Okay, I'm two steps behind you, but I think I get where you were. Okay. Thank you for that. All right. Committee reports. We will start with Ed Committee and Ms. Justice.
So the Ed Committee met on September 1st for 60 minutes. Committee members in attendance were myself, Michael Cologne, Joe Cordero, and Scott Huff. Our guests were Laura Kaplan, the Director of School Counseling, and Allison Grill, the College Counselor. The items that we discussed, we had Ms. Kaplan and Ms. Grill attend as a follow-up discussion to discuss how we better utilize their attendance at future committee meetings. The board would like to share feedback with them to better inform their work, and we also wanted to give them the opportunity in that space to apprise us of any insights or challenges that they faced during the year. One item of feedback that was suggested was a more accessible college counseling page to the school website that could be helpful for all families and not just necessarily junior and senior student families. The district goals were presented by Superintendent Huff tonight, and we did review them during our committee meeting. The K through 12 new and revised curriculum adoption, we looked at the revisions, the new content writing that was completed this summer. Committee members read and recommend approval of the new and revised curriculum. And as Superintendent Huff discussed earlier, the Health and PDE curriculum was revised, and you will receive communications about any changes in the next coming weeks. We received an update from Dr. Cordero on the Summer Academy. There were 132 students this year. The students this year did not have the same testing, so they took an end-of-the-year diagnostic, which gave us a score which allowed the students to have an individualized summer learning plan that was tailored to meet their needs, and each elementary school did participate, and they did see demonstrated growth in student learning this summer. We wanted to highlight that there was a calendar item that had been changed for the 22, 23, and 23, 24 school years. Due to Election Day, there will be no school on Tuesday, June 6th. Therefore, the last day of school for students will change to Wednesday, June 14th, and the last day for staff will be Thursday, June 15th. The middle school graduation will be moved to Tuesday, June 20th, and the high school graduation ceremony will be moved to Wednesday, June 21st. And the board tonight will approve those calendar changes for both of those school years that have been adjusted. We discussed the Emergency Remote Instruction Plan that the state asked the district to create. The Emergency Remote Instruction Plan has been created, reviewed by the committee, and once it is approved by the board, the final draft will be submitted to the state. Dr. Cordero gave us an overview of the PD plans for the school year. The committee recommends approval of the district's PD plan, and similar to last year, a portion of PD involves capacity building in specific areas, assessing students' needs, student achievement, cultural competence, inclusivity training, restorative practices for addressing students' social and emotional needs. And we also have a portion of the PD that is based on the 13 New Jersey State mandated learnings, which could include recognition of substance abuse, student safety data systems, and ASPA training. A non-agenda item that we wanted to revisit was there was a decision that has been made to proceed with the One Moment, Three Decisions Program that we discussed at the July meeting, and the existing program will be altered to meet the specific needs of our current students, and more details about that program will be provided to families. Our recommendations were approval of the 2022-23 district goals, approval of all curriculum updates and revisions, approval of the district professional development plan, approval of the Emergency Remote Instruction Plan, and approval of the 2022-23 and 2023-24 calendar revisions. Our next meeting will be October 6th. Does any of the board members have anything to add? Any questions? All righty. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Alita. We will jump into Ops. Mr. Cho.
Good evening, everyone. The Operations Committee met on August 23rd for approximately an hour and a half. The district members in attendance were Superintendent Scott Huff, Derek Jess, Emilio Torres, and Laura Muller. Board members in attendance, Melanie Cohen, Kelly Stanton, and myself. A number of items reviewing the past school year as well as activity over the summer. To start, an update on the bond proposal project. One of the requirements for state approval was for our district's long-range facility plan to be updated and submitted. That has been completed and approved by the state in August. And then separately, the project's scope and details are submitted to the Department of State, Department of Education, and they have to approve that, each specific project also, prior to the first reading of City Council. The DOE has given us feedback that the projects are signed and under review, and the only exception to that was the project related to the lower high school field, which needed some more information. Derek, I'll just pause. Any change in that status?
Yes. Today, we received notification from the Department of Ed that the lower field project has been assigned a project number, and it is under review with the other projects.
So once we get feedback from the Department of Education on the various projects that we have proposed, then we will then be able to take it to the next step for proposed first reading, the city council meeting. The high school HPAC, which is a project that started earlier this year, is approved and funded by the Esther Graz and Capital Reserves from the prior year. It's approximately about 80% complete. There were some delays of a couple of rooftop units and air handlers, which are expected to be delivered in the next month or so, so the work will be completed later in the fall. Most importantly, the classroom wing that was not air conditioned is complete, and then the staff is also working with the contractors to potentially upgrade some of the other existing AC. The project is under budget with approximately 140,000 contingency remaining, and those funds will be used to potentially upgrade some of the existing HPAC here at the high school. On the food service update, Pomtonian reported a Maystar Plus of $53,247. June was the minimum amount given at the end of school, and the total year-to-date was The federal program for food aid during the pandemic did expire on June 30th, so the district does now have to go back to the traditional applications for families to participate in the reduced free lunch programs. That status will continue till the end of September, and the district is communicating with the families to make sure everybody understands the requirements to participate in the program. Pomtonian is also working on the menus to accommodate students' dietary needs during their various respective religious holidays. As noted in the prior board meeting back in June or May, the district did transition to a new medical benefits provider effective July 1. That transition for all staff, I think, went very well. The medical benefit rider is the school health insurance fund, and then on the dental side, the district is now self-insuring. Both of those programs will provide material cost savings in the upcoming year and beyond for the district itself. Our insurance benefits brokers are working with the staff to address any transition issues, and I think overall, transition is going well for the staff. As Superintendent Huff and President Cologne mentioned about the STEAM classrooms, I think the one thing I want to highlight, that all the work done for the new STEAM innovation labs and the primary centers was done by the district facility staff. Anthony Mastrocola and Rich Hughes oversaw design and executed the work. And the Jefferson STEAM room was also updated, so now that all five have new equipment, desks, and such. And as noted by President Cologne, there was a number of famous projects done over the summer in preparation for the school opening. There are a couple items that will still need some additional work, primarily the auditorium here in the- here in the high school and the auditorium in the middle school. The sound, the sound equipment needs some repairs and upgrades, so there, the district is working on sources of funding to try to accomplish that work during the school year. Approximately one hundred twenty thousand is the estimate at the high school and ninety thousand at the middle school. And then separately, staff is working with Pomtonian for updates to the high school kitchen, cafeteria kitchen. At Jefferson Elementary School, the staff is exploring some minor renovations in the classrooms. They are designing kind of a prototype classroom with upgrades of the cabinetry and storage to be reviewed for scope and cost, and that once approved and as funds are available, the design will be implemented throughout the classrooms at Jefferson Elementary over time. One item from last year was a flood update, flooding issue at Brayton. All the insurance proceeds have been received. District has applied to FEMA for application for the reimbursement of the insurance deductibles paid and seeking a potential grant from FEMA to help mitigate one of the sources of water intrusion, which were the wall-mounted HVAC units and the newer wing, and to eliminate that lower opening and transition the HVAC to new rooftop units. In terms of the fiscal twenty-one, twenty-year budget closeout, staff is still working on finalizing the accounting. In the June meeting, we approved transfers of up to five hundred thousand to the maintenance reserve and up to one point five million into the capital reserve from the fiscal year surpluses, and the expectation is that the final amounts will be close to those projected amounts. And then lastly, there's a state requirement now that districts set up a school security threat assessment committee. So, a couple of the programs the committee's being stepped up and a couple of areas for research. One is potential creation of an anonymous web page reporting, well, just like social media type of issues where possible risks of violence, self-harm, and vandalism are made aware to students. And then also, potential third-party monitoring of Chromebook activity while students are in school. And then also, an upgrade to the visitor clearing procedure, where now, you know, you come to the school, you announce your name and state your reasons or are plus ten. All visitors will be required to potentially show a government ID, which can be scanned for any potential issue with background issues and eligibility to come into the school. So, these are things that will be reviewed by the committee in the course of the coming year. There are no specific board items or action items for the board, and the next meeting will be on October fourth, before thirty p.m. Kelly, Melanie, and there was a lot there. Anything I missed or clarifications?
I was hoping you couldn't have missed anything with that. That was, that was pretty thorough. Well, finishing a, closing out books with replenishing reserves is always a good outcome, so that's, that's a big positive. I have one question, which, Yana, I don't know you or Derek. For Brayton, when we had the flooding a couple of years back, there was a-
One year ago.
Yeah, I did, yeah. I was hoping it was further, further ago. We talked about these temporary gates in certain low spots where the doors are to, to mitigate flooding. Is that something that's still being looked at?
It is. It's, it's been very hard to try to get them because of supply chain issues, and everybody's now trying to get them, but that is something that we are still looking to do as well. And that, in addition to request to mitigate the HVAC units, is still with FEMA, so they are still reviewing that as well.
Yeah, that's a more expensive-
Correct.
Situation. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, thank you for that. Any other board questions from the Ops, with the Ops team? Okay, we move on to policy. Ms. Cohn.
So, the Policy Committee met on Wednesday, August twenty-third for thirty-four minutes. In attendance was me, Superintendent Huff, Kathleen Murphy, Laura Muller, and Joseph Porak. We discussed several policy topics, beginning with policy oh-one-four-three-point-two, the High School Student Representative to the Board of Education, which was revised. It's been rewritten to reflect the new legal requirements for school districts within the of grades nine through twelve to include a minimum of one student to serve as a non-voting student representative on the Board of Education. This policy revision is mandatory, and as you know, we welcome the embrace tonight, so we've already started to implement that policy. Also, we discussed the policy oh-one-six-three, quorum revised. This policy has been revised to provide additional details and procedures when a board invokes the doctrine of necessity. The doctrine of necessity is invoked when a quorum of the board has conflicts of interest that prevent the board from acting on a matter required to be voted upon, and this policy revision is recommended. We also discussed the policy two-four-one-five, Every Student Succeed Act. Policy has been revised to be consistent with policy two-four-one-five-point-oh-four and two-four-one-five-point-five-oh. Parental involvement has been revised to parent and family engagement, and the policy numbers and titles were updated, and this policy revision is mandatory. And finally, we discussed the policy five-five-one-seven, School District Issues Student Identification Cards. This policy adds language to align with a new state law, which requires a Board of Education that has grades seven through twelve and that issues student ID cards. To print on the back of the student ID cards, the telephone number for the New Jersey Suicide Prevention Hope Line, and the contact information for a crisis text line. And this policy revision is mandatory. So, the committee recommendations are a first reading of these revised policies and a second reading of policy two-four-one-five-point-oh-four, the Title I, District-wide Parent and Family Engagement; policies two-four-one-five-point-five-oh through five-A, Title I, School Parent and Family Engagement; policy five-five-one-two, Crimeant Intimidation and Bullying; and policy six-six-two-oh, Petty Cash. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October fourth. And that, as you record-
I have one committee member in attendance, so Walida, do you have anything that I missed or any clarifications? And are there any questions from other board members?
Okay, thank you. Communications in lieu of Ms. Miller. I believe Ms. Stanton, are you speaking to the minutes? Okay, great, thank you.
The Communications Committee met on August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, for approximately forty-five minutes. Committee members in attendance were Donna Miller, our Chair, Jan Cho, myself, Superintendent Huff, Lauren Calender, and Doug Or. We discussed five different things, the first being an update on the back-to-school paperwork submissions. As of August thirtieth, the district can report that ninety-two percent of families had completed their back-to-school paperwork, and this is a fantastic result, which is likely due in part to the increasing ease that technology has brought to completing the process. The district appreciates the time and attention that our school community has taken and brings to this important yearly task. We discussed the mobile app update. Last month, the committee reported that the district is moving forward with a mobile app which will consolidate and prioritize district website information. This process is moving forward. Of note, the app creators require the district to create privacy protocols. These protocols are typical and require users of the app to check the box and agree to terms of use, cookies, links, et cetera. The district has created the protocols, and the committee is satisfied that they are adequate and ready for addition to the app. These protocols do not require board approval. The app banner was approved by the committee, and the next steps include finalizing our app template and then submitting the totality of the app to the App Store approvers. We then discussed the district newsletter. The committee is pleased that going forward, the district newsletter will be easily accessible on one's mobile device or phone. It is going to be sent via email rather than a PDF link. This change comes in response to the yearly communication survey. The results are in our two thousand twenty-two minutes. The Congressman's Town Hall, the committee learned that on September tenth, the Summit High School Auditorium will be used by Congressman Milonowski to conduct a town hall with Summit residents. The paid use of our facility was deemed within policy seven-five-one-zero, Use of School Facilities by the Administration and the Board Attorney, since this is not a campaigning forum or a fundraising event. As a result, no district communication is required. And lastly, coffee with the Board of Education president. The committee discussed the return of coffee with the V O E president, an important aspect of the Board's commitment for open, easy, and transparent two-way communication with the community for the past decade. Coffees are intended as the counterpoint to the one-way communication dictated by law at our monthly board meetings. At coffees, there are typically no set agendas, though agendas can be set for hot topics. Every Summit resident is welcome, and conversations about the district and student achievement can take a more comfortable form. Coffees were not scheduled last year, and the committee overwhelmingly supports bringing them back with the return to normalcy post-COVID. Times and formats for these open exchanges will be communicated shortly. We have no recommendations at this time, and our next meeting will be on October fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Ms. Stanton. Any questions from the board on questions, comments? I thought those, those coffees were going to be with the superintendent, but I was going to be there anyway.
That was not your meeting.
No, it will be both of us. Now, thank you for, for that update. Negotiations Committee. We did, the negotiations committee did meet on August twenty-fourth for approximately fifty minutes to discuss a personnel matter, and so there's nothing to report other than that meeting occurring. Liaison reports. Did anyone liaise with community groups over the course of, I suppose, the summer, July and August, since we didn't have a, an August meeting? Everyone just away at the beach? Okay. Great. So, we will move to, to public comment. And Secretary Jess, I suppose you can, you can do the spiel. I would like to, to make a point before we, we offer the microphone to the community, so I can do that after your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone wishing to speak shall first seek recognition by the presiding officer. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address in a clear, audible tone for the record. All comments should be directed to the Board President and not an individual member of the Board. Unless additional time is granted by the Board President, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. In addition, please note that this portion of the meeting is for public comment and not meant to be a back-and-forth. Board members and administration will not respond to questions or comments at this time. Information will be provided as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Jess. And before we invite the community forward, I would like to, to reinforce the points with respect to the public comment section of the meeting. I do find, and I think all members, Board members, find this to be somewhat of a cold forum without dialogue, and it can be a bit inefficient, quite frankly, in, in terms of addressing issues and getting things done for community members. However, it is designed to avoid conflict in, in public meetings and to keep the meetings effective. But I would say that it should be known that when points are made by the public in this forum in the comment section, those matters are noted. We are all listening. And most often, what occurs is those topics will be discussed by the administration following these meetings or in committee by the Board. And so, it's, it's important, I think, for our community to realize that us sitting here listening, sometimes in a cold manner, is not to dismiss any of the points that are being made in, in the public reading section. It is intended, again, just to keep the meeting effective and that the points are digested by the Board and the administration, and steps are taken to address matters that are brought forth. And so, and, and one other point that ties into the, the coffees, we are trying to set up, and we will have at least two over the course of this year, coffees or town halls. Superintendent Huff referred to it as a, as a town hall in October. It's the same concept, where there will be sessions where the, the Board, myself and Superintendent Huff will be there for, for dialogue, as opposed to the manner with which the, the public discussion takes place here on a monthly basis. So, so with that, we can open up to public comment for items on the agenda. Public comment for items not on the agenda. Of course, I go through my whole spiel, and there's no comments. That's par for the course. Okay, I think we move forward. You don't get to use your clock.
It does bring joy.
It does bring a little joy to you. Uh, yes, motion to close.
Some move. Oh, sorry.
Second. Okay.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Any vote? So.
Board minutes. Do I have an approval for the July eighteenth minutes as well as the August twenty-fourth retreat? Motion.
So who?
Second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Attention? Motion carries.
Okay, section twelve, Curriculum Instruction Program. I have through G. And I don't think we had any-
We did not.
We did not have amendments there. Okay. Items A through G for curriculum instruction programs, motion to approve.
Some move.
Second.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
Vice President Cho?
Yes.
President Cologne?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Section thirteen, Finance. Always lengthy. A through. Double A? Is that correct? That is correct. All right, A through double A, motion to approve.
Some move.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
Vice President Cho?
Yes.
President Cologne?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Item fourteen, School Board Operation. Items A through D, motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
Vice President Cho?
Yes.
President Cologne?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Personnel, item fifteen. Do I have a motion to approve items A through I, I, with the amendment for B adding nineteen and twenty? Motion to approve.
Some move.
Second.
If I may, a couple of words here.
Yes, please. Superintendent-
Just a couple of notable names on the Personnel side of the agenda, starting with Brenda Nobiel. She is resigning for retirement effective January first, and certainly need to mention her dedication to the district for the last sixteen years, I believe, all of which were confidential secretary to the Director of Human Resources. And as Mr. Gardella can attest, her contributions and her work ethic in this district are unmatched. And I just wish her well in her retirement, as well as, obviously, with Mr. Safferny becoming our new middle school principal. Pleasant send off to Dr. Gallo and her new endeavors. We wish her well and thank her for her four years of contributions as a middle school principal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those notes. Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
Vice President Cho?
Yes.
President Cologne?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. On to Policies and regs. Item sixteen. Do I have a motion to approve the first and second readings, as noted by Ms. Cohn? Motion.
Some move.
Second.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
Vice President Cho?
Yes.
President Cologne?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. And so, we do have a need for a closed session this evening, and so, Secretary Jess, should we motion to- we motion to go into that session or motion to close this meeting first? You give me the...
I will do the motion for executive session. The Summit Board of Education may hold an executive session to discuss appropriate matters. Closed session minutes will be reviewed periodically to determine the appropriateness of their release, and whereas pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, the Board of Education may exclude the public from that portion of a public meeting wherein the Board discusses any of the matters set forth at NJSA 10:4-12B 1 through 9. Now therefore be resolved that in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board of Education shall conduct a closed session pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B for the purpose of discussing the following matters: personnel and pending or anticipated contract negotiations. The Board will not return from executive session, and no action will be taken. With that being said, may I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? So moved, and may we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Meeting is adjourned at 8:18 p.m. Thank you, thank you.